Town Councils sitting as a board of licensing non-advertised licenses. Central Bakery, 70 Shove Street, request renewal of Victorling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Route 177, I'm going to do it as a block unless anyone has objections. Route 177 Flea Market and Snack Bar, 1560 Boogamash Road, request renewal of holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. J&amp;D Hot Dogs, 1540 Boogamash Road, request renewal of Victorling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. After Glow Incorporated, 295 Main Road, request renewal of holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Charles Coelho, CMC Family Limited Partnership, 1764 Crandall Road, request approval for the renewal of quarry license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Do I have a motion?
We have a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
It's just non-advertised.
No, it doesn't.
It's under public hearings, in public presentations.
Oh, okay. Let's see.
Of course it is.
Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve the non-advertised licenses. Central Bakery requests to renew their Victorling license. Route 177 Flea Market and Snack Bar requests renewal of holiday license. J&amp;D Hot Dogs requests renewal of Victorling license. After Glow Inc. requests renewal of holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Motion's been made. All those in favor? Your motion did not include Charles Coelho.
No, I know. That was on purpose. I wanted to...
That's what I figured.
Yeah, this is a slightly more sensitive topic.
Would you like to comment on it?
Who you... yeah. I thought you were asking Andy, sorry.
No, I just would like to suggest with Mr. Coelho that if you choose to renew this, even though he's not operating, but you require a specific condition, not only meeting all legal requirements, but that he provide, before it be issued, an updated bond with the carrying through for the next fiscal year, through the next year.
Discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Joe.
Mr. Tyte, does that be quiet of all, that be quiet of all quarries or just the one that's actually committed to accept a license?
It's required of all of them, that this is the only one that's provided, this is the reason we have, this is the only license that's issued.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're in various stages of litigation and disagreement with the other quarries. This one has provided.
This one actually has a license. Any further comments?
Just for background for the newer members, originally, as far as this idea of the bond and the reclamation, the, there was a plan prepared, it was reviewed by towns consulting engineers, Commonwealth engineers, they came back, said this would be the price on it. He objected. They met, they worked it out, he was able to prove to them that there was dirt on the property that could be moved from one side to another, that reduced the cost, and our own consulting engineers, Commonwealth engineers, did agree on the number on the bond and his plans for reclamation bond. That was a couple of years ago. And since he hasn't been doing any activity, there hasn't really been a change in that system.
So, the bond is the insurance in case the owner leaves the property and doesn't do the reclamation?
That's right.
The town can use that money for reclamation?
Yes.
Okay, that's pretty much standing with...
Right.
And we just had, remember this was on, I believe, in October?
Yep.
And we just had it go through the planning board process and everything, which is a requirement. But at that point, the council had said, when it came up for renewal, so we do have a bond now, if it expires, we will just get him to do the new bond. But as far as the planning board process, that's already completed, the council.
My move that we approve the renewal of a quarry license to Charles Coelho, CMC Family Limited Partnership of 1764 Crandall Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and the presentation of an updated bond certificate.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor? Appointments and resignations. Resignation Conservation Commission, Peter Mello, 1912, Crandall Road.
I see, so...
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed. Appointments. Tiverton Arts Council, Barbara F. Pelletier, 104 Bonneville Drive, term 415, 2016. Barbara, would you like to tell us about yourself?
Well, I'm a resident in town. I like the town and trying to do my best to highlight it. And I saw an opening on the Arts Council, which I think will toenail with a lot of my interests. And I'm not an artist, but I've been to galleries from Amsterdam to Vienna and Venice and all kinds of little ones in between because I went to school in Europe. So, I think I can break, bring a little bit of, I don't know, difference to this whole thing. And I never, ever run out of ideas, unfortunately. I love public art and I have, as a matter of fact, written to Mr. Lewis on the DOT to put an art installation on the bike path because it's a space just crying out to be embellished, and he thought it was a good idea, so he passed it on to the State Art Council. And of course, now it's a funding issue. But I really, really would like to highlight the upcoming young artists in town growing up. We should feature them, we should feature, put a little exhibit together, provide them with frames and teach them a frame, will do wonders for any painting. And I think we can probably pull it off. We have 50 odd spaces, so I hope you would consider my requesting to be on your Arts Council.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Zoning Board of Review, Second Alternate, George S. Alzabak. Why'd you laugh? 63 Stony Hill Road, unexpired term, 715, 2015.
Madam President, do you want to do these individually?
I thought we'd do them all and then we'd make motions.
Okay.
It was just picked up, clicker. Go ahead, George. Tell us about yourself.
My name's George Alzabak. I've been a business owner in town since 1988. I want to get involved again. I've been out of the picture for a while, so it'd be nice to bring a business owner perspective into the zoning board and hopefully we could bring the right businesses into town and keep the wrong businesses out of town, change zoning where it fits, not just because, I don't know, I just want to get involved again.
Thank you, George.
And I found in the right place.
Tiverton Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission, Bradley, and I'm going to mess up this last name, Scoach, 1 Mill Street, number 1505, term 715, 2016. Is Bradley here?
Madam President, he contacted us and he's unable to make tonight's meeting. But this position was advertised.
And we do have his resume. Economic Development Committee, unexpired term, 715, 2017, Renee DeJesus Jones, 161 Highland Road.
Okay. I'm interested in this for a couple of reasons. And actually, Denise, I have a health background, so I don't think that that disqualifies me. In fact, if she's my example, I think it qualifies me. And with any decision, you know, what prompted me to apply for this was basically I was asked, after attending a meeting with the Economic Development Commission, Sue Gill suggested that I apply for the vacancy. I hadn't considered it, but I really do feel that it's something that I'm very much interested because when I ran for council two years ago, I spoke to a lot of people in business and was told that, you know, Tiverton was a very unfriendly place for businesses. I don't know why that is, but I was surprised this year when I spoke to Mr. Lambert and after a meeting and had him say, well, I don't know why it's still unfriendly for business. So, I said, well, gee, this is a, why is it? You know, and as somebody who is used to looking at a situation in health, that's what we do, we look at the symptoms, we determine what our long-term and short-term goals are, and we develop a plan and figure out what we do to meet the needs of that particular patient, or in this case, in this particular case, the business community in the town of Tiverton. You know, I, you know, look at the bigger picture, so I realize Tiverton is a place that you can't, you know, Rhode Island is, you can't separate Rhode Island from the United States and the state of Rhode Island. We have, we're just coming out of a recession, so you know that businesses are going to be hurting. So, how can we help our businesses move along? I have, I think one of the first things I'd like to do is call up Gina Raimondo and let her know that we're right here and that maybe with her business plan and expertise, she ought to come down and take a look. I know they're waiting for the Rhode Island Commerce Division to sort of figure out who the head is still going to be because that's, now that there's a change in administration, I think that that might be something that they're looking at. When I called them the other day for something else, they said, well, we're still waiting for the other shoe to drop. But I think this is a good opportunity for Tiverton to get in and start talking to people and following up on what they've, what the council has done so far with Chafee and the Rhode Island Commerce Division and the industrial park. I think, let me just finish up. I am very, oh, I'm also very much interested in the smart growth movement, and I'm interested in things like when I see articles like this, and how can this apply to Tiverton? When we find out that it, according to many, many organizations, if Rhode Islanders, and I'm quoting from the paper, if Rhode Islanders shifted 10% of what they buy from large out-of-state chain stores to locally owned businesses, it could pump $373 million into the state's economy. So, it's time to look at what really charges up the base here. And I think we've got some really good local businesses, I think we need to support them, and I'm very interested in getting involved. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, Renee. Next applicant for the Economic Development Committee is Tom Prince Zeppe. Prince, is he in the room? 490 Riverside Drive. Nancy, did you hear from him?
But he was in...
Now, I'd like to entertain a motion for appointments.
I move that we make the appointment of Barbara F. Pelletier to the Tiverton Arts Council for a term expiring 4/15/2016.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Opposed. Next motion?
I move that we appoint George S. Alzabak to the zoning board of, to the zoning board of review as the second alternate to fill an unexpired term ending 7/15/2015.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed.
I also, while he was not here with us, would move that we appoint Bradley, how do you pronounce that?
Shock.
Shock of Mill Street to the Tiverton Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission to fill a term expiring 7/15/2016, and I'd just like to make a comment.
Second, I'm sorry.
Second.
I just want to, not everybody might, may have this, Bradley possesses credentials at which he put on the appointment request. He's an instructional designer with U.S. Sailing, was powerboating, he's been U.S. Sailing Level One Certified Instructor for over 10 years. He has been a youth sailing program director and instructor at four different locations. In 2012, he was the harbor master at Pebble Beach, California, and Stillwater Cove. He's got a flexible work schedule and can meet on Mondays at 7:30. He's a recent resident of town, but he is from California and he's worked, he's dedicated, hard-working young gentleman. Because he indicates he wants to be on the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission to build roots and be a part of the community. He believes he has the necessary skills, knowledge, and interest in to be an engaged member of the Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission. And just by reading his credentials, I tend to believe that that is true.
So, I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Opposed.
The, as is our past practice, whenever we have a surplus of applicants to a position, we typically wait one meeting to appoint, and potentially, maybe we can reach out to Tom in that time and see if we can convince him to come to the next meeting to be interviewed. And that way, we have a complete picture of the application and go from there.
All right, so we'll table this to the 22nd meeting.
That's our next meeting, yeah?
Yes, December 22nd. Thank you, everybody, for applying. New Business Counselor Shabbat, approval of resolution to postpone the December 11, 2014 adoption of the economic development plan known as Roadmap Rhode Island.
Thank you, madam. I have received quite a few phone calls, emails, people just reaching out to me regarding this map, Roadmap Rhode Island. And I know that they were in town for one discussion, they had a public forum at Sandy Woods that I attended. The amazing thing regarding that meeting was they had a lot of maps, and they did a lot of work categorizing the town, locating where things were, and what they reviewed with us was, were the maps accurate? And we gave them that information. I know they had another public forum, probably months later, but I was unable to make that. And based upon the information that I received from a lot of individuals, there's concern out there that they're going to approve this Roadmap Rhode Island at the December 11 State Planning Council Consortium meeting. And it really hasn't been vetted by all the cities and towns in Rhode Island. Most of the major cities were included in the group that developed this map, Roadmap Rhode Island, but only two small towns were included. That was, I think it was Westerly and Burrville. And the information I received from these people were that they let their planning department review this and their councils did not. So, there's a lot of concern around this. So, I propose this resolution to request that the State Planning Council not adopt it at their December 11 meeting and postpone any further action on it until next year, when it can be properly vetted by cities and towns and the people of Rhode Island. I don't know if any of the other counselors have done any research or reviewed this.
I did a little bit, Joan, and I agree with you. I think this should be looked at a little bit more, especially for the effects with
My comments are, I have, I have read the document twice now. And I also read the HUD notification of funding availability that coincides with the grant. And I, I'm sympathetic to getting as many eyes in front of this, it's a fairly large document, it's almost 200 pages. I am sympathetic to getting as many eyes in front as possible, but I, I just, the language in this resolution is not something I can support. I don't believe that it adequately or appropriately represents my stance on this issue, and its characterization is a little, I don't know, it does not, I'm happy to request that we take some more time for review and public comment and formal comment from municipalities, but I can't, there, I mean, I have more black lines on here than there are, absence of black lines.
Any other comment?
Please. Okay. Well, I've kind of followed this issue for quite a few years, probably because I listened to some of the radio stations that would, like Glenn Beck and things like that on occasion, to talk about Agenda 21, you know, and it was, then it was all like a conspiracy theory, but it seems to be coming to life that we would actually be told that we will have, basically be told as a town that we, you know, our zoning is prejudiced because we're not allowing low-income housing, let's say, up on Highland Road. And that's not an exaggeration. I sat on the zoning board for quite a few years and I saw a lot of proposals for developments for low-income housing. And, you know, they'd be in areas where there's no public transportation, very few stores, and it made totally no sense because the average family that's, you know, out there, you know, living in the suburbs here in Tiverton, you know, and the mother and the father working and they have to have two cars because they got to both get to work and get the kids to the ballgames. Unfortunately, the people that are in lower income can't afford to have a couple of cars, so they're required to use public transportation. So, if you put public housing out where there is no public transportation or no stores readily available for them, it really doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense. And this whole process is, the more I read it, it just, you know, it, I mean, I'm so glad that Chafee's leaving, this just seems some of his type of thinking. I don't know what else to say. I'm just going to support this because I think, you know, this, some of these items and this need to come to light to really show what this is. This is not good for Rhode Island, this is not smart growth. What this is, is, I guess, social engineering. It's, and it seems like it's just a way to, I don't know, I don't, I don't consider our zoning to be snub zoning or in any way, you know, causing harm to minorities, so I, there's no way I could support, I'm going to support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I've just got one. Just got one more to sort of overall, if we're going to discuss the merits of the document. This document is, I think if you've got a couple, three, four hours, you should read it because it is a very dense document. And it talks about a lot of things. And what it is, is a document that sets a premise of analyzing what exists currently in the state of Rhode Island, demographically, economically, transportation-wise, infrastructure improvement, and housing, among other things. Finds the areas in which this panel or this, these groups, many groups of different people have found potential hurdles to overcome. And then sets forth a number of strategies or suggestions as to how to remedy those and how to make the connections. And it deals with a lot more than just, deals with a lot more than just low-income housing. It deals with transit connections, developing additional infrastructure priorities on the state level, local level, and in between. And it really does forecast what we should all be doing, is a forecast of what our town needs, what our city needs, what the region needs, what the hurdles are to overcome, and how there are strategies in which we can overcome those hurdles. And it looks at the entire picture, which I think is an important component to it. It's an advisory document. I appreciate that we want to look for the law of unintended consequences whenever we take a look at these kinds of all-encompassing documents. I really have looked hard for the invisible horror, and I haven't found it yet, but I appreciate that there are more people who want to study this harder, which is why I'm sensitive to that, and I'm certainly happy to postpone it. But I think it's all in all a very good document and a very good set of guidelines for us all, whether it's adopted at the state or not. This has got a lot of good strategies and a lot of good analysis and a lot of good methodologies for how we ought to be dealing with problems that we face in our community. And, you know, just, there are statements in this resolution that I can't get behind. One, the first one of which is the town council has not had ample opportunity to study and become familiar with the details of the roadmap. I think that's not something I would agree with. I also would disagree with the fact, the statement that the town council nor any member of the public had an opportunity to review the contents, terms, and conditions of all documents relating to the Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant from HUD. 35 seconds after Google search, I found the document on HUD's website, and it's not that long. The third paragraph is something that I have not personally been made aware of, but that says, "We have recently been made aware of growing significant concerns among citizens of Tiverton and the state that Roadmap RI is not actually an economic development plan at all as represented, and that said plan will likely infringe upon and adversely impact private and commercial property rights and individual liberties and freedoms and result in federal and state mandates that will interfere with the, and undermine local government sovereignty and self-determination as its constituency and violate Article of the Constitution of Rhode Island." Aside from that being one enormously long sentence, I don't think that accurately represents how I feel about this document. But I'm happy to have someone convince me otherwise.
If I could make just a brief comment, Madam President. I'm somewhat in between. I don't mind admitting that I really haven't studied this document. Would it be possible to amend this resolution to include Paragraph 1, Paragraph 2, which would read in part, I've added, "The Tiverton Town Council and many of the citizens of Tiverton have not had," so on. Paragraph 1 and 2. I agree with Mr. Pelletier. I'm not prepared to say that this is all unconstitutional or illegal. But then going to the last page, "Resolved, we therefore respectfully request that the State Planning Council Consortium postpone its meeting to vote on whether or not to adopt its plan until sometime in early 2015 in order to allow for further public debate and further education of state and local officials and the public at large on the benefits, if any, of said plan to the town of Tiverton and the state of Rhode Island." That would give an opportunity to people like me who just haven't studied this subject to actually sit down and be forced to read the 200 pages.
Any further comment?
Madam President, I just, I just want to say, our town, we, you know, we, our comprehensive plan, I know, you know, we've been updating it for years, but the fact is, we have a comprehensive plan, and this town has a charter. We have some sovereignty here. We have, we're allowed, you know, to make our own zoning laws, change policies. The last thing we need is other government bodies, whether the state or federal, coming in and telling us how to do those very things, how to set up our zoning and different things like that. And while they can't literally come in and tell us, this is what you'll do, what they will do is withhold federal dollars from us or state dollars from us. And that's kind of what, you know, they're leveraged, just like the issue with the sewer, where, you know, if we don't finally comply, they're going to, whatever, we'll withhold dollars from you, the legislature. The bottom line is, you know, we've lost enough of our sovereignty in this town. I mean, we're already so, you know, mandated by state and federal laws, and I think we need to protect the little bit that we have left so that we can, as citizens in this town, be able to control the growth as the way we see fit as a town without influence, from outside influences telling us that we're bigots because we won't allow, and they've literally used that language, that because we won't allow certain types of housing in certain areas based on our zone... certain types of housing in certain areas based on our zoning, you know, we've, we've worked pretty hard in this town to try to cut down on, we've eliminated, we've merged our fifteen lots to try to, you know, to ease the burden on the town as far as, you know, residential, it, you know, we've gone as far as some of, some of the, some of the places in town that used to be R-30 are now R-60, requiring, you know, two acres to, to build a house out in the South End, but that protects the town, and for any outside body to come out and tell us that we have to reduce lot size back to our fifteen, you know, to, and then, and triple-decker housings and things like that, or we're gonna withhold, the bottom line is, you know, it's, it's our choice here as a town, and I object to anybody coming in and telling us different, it should be our choice, it's our property, we made the investment, nobody in that state planning board or state council invested a dime in my property, and the, when the property values drop, it's on me, not them.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just to follow on, uh, Council Suza's comments, we, the state required us to have a comprehensive plan, and that goes to state planning for approval, it started out as, comprehensive plan started out as just a guideline, and today it's held up in a court of laws, as the document said, this is, this is what it should be, so it started out as a guideline and now it's used in court, this is, if this is adopted, I fear, by the state planning board, state planning will require us to put it in our comprehensive plan and change the very nature of our comprehensive plan to match what they, their vision of Tiverton is and not our vision of Tiverton, so, that's one of the major concerns that I've heard, that we will lose control over our zoning, and I think that's important for our town because we have our own vision, and that's our comprehensive plan, that's our vision for our town, we don't need to have the state tell us what our vision should be, and this is what I, I see this as, they're telling us what the vision is for the entire state, and it's gonna be accepted by the state planning, and it's gonna be filtered down to every city and town, and it was developed by a lot of the major cities in the state, but only a, a couple of small towns, and one, one shoe doesn't fit everybody, you know, this is, this is one plan, it's, it's not, um, what is good for a city is not necessarily good for our town, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna add, if this is a compromise, I was fine with Paragraph, with the, we're at Paragraph One, Paragraph Two, I'd even add Paragraph Three, I'm not prepared to say that I haven't reviewed something, but I know it's unconstitutional, illegal, and that I strongly believe that we should oppose it, I, I just can't make a statement like that, so if you could, if we could delete what is what the fourth paragraph, the fifth paragraph, and just use the, the rest that I quoted on page, sorry, the last page, I'd be perfectly fine with that, I just don't wanna make many, any representations on a document that I've never read.
Do you agree with that, Councilman Shap?
I am, lost as to where the fifth paragraph is.
Uh, well.
Is that the?
Where it says, now, oh, no, well, just at the bottom there, this bottom part, I would delete that, where it starts talking about, I'm, I strongly believe in the following, blah, 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 what I would do is just pick it up where it says, we, the second line, last page, where it says, "We therefore respectfully request," and what would back that up is Paragraph One, which is okay, Paragraph Two, as I modified it slightly, and, uh, Paragraph Three.
So your modification to Paragraph Two, is you added, "And many citizens..."
And many, yeah, many of the citizens of Tiverton.
Yep, that's good. I'm just gonna have Trish.
May I, I will keep it short, um, I have been following this document in particular, and, um, aside from the things contained in the document, some of which are good ideas and some of which are a little questionable, the one piece of this that concerns me, and I think as a municipality we should be most concerned about, is that the proponents of this document right now are very quick to keep pointing out, "This is only a guideline, this is only a guideline, this is only a guideline," um, my experience, however, in going up to the General Assembly, is that anytime there is something like this that comes along in the state of Rhode Island, various special interest groups and constituencies who may not have everyone's best interests at heart, look at a document like this as a great opportunity to introduce a flurry of legislation that supports something thereafter because, well, it supports this document, or it's consistent with Roadmap RI, or it's supportive of Roadmap RI, and, um, so while it may only be a guideline and there may actually be no intent even from the state planning office to legislate this, I do think that, um, just given the very nature of politics in the General Assembly, that we could expect a flurry of legislation around this, um, and, and it will become legislatively mandated, and for little communities like ours, many of the communities who voted on this are in parts of the state where, um, you know, their development potential is very limited, they're very close to build out, so when it comes to, you know, changing zoning or mandating things, it really doesn't impact them that much because they don't have that much left to build out, and in some cases even things like affordable housing, they've already met their goals, so the legislators from their areas, it's no skin off their back to vote yes for anything, it won't affect them, it's municipalities like Tiverton that'll be in the, in the biggest, you know, pickle, so I would urge you, as you think about this, if that's a concern, to also raise the concern of kind of ancillary legislation that comes indirectly around this particular document.
Thanks, Trish.
Very good point.
So, Mr. Lambert, would you like to make your motion?
I'll make a, a motion to adopt the resolution, as I've already outlined, specifically Paragraph One, the "we're as," Paragraph Two adding, "And many of the citizens of Tiverton have become," uh, delete Paragraph, uh, keep Paragraph Three, uh, delete Paragraph Four, the introduction to the last paragraph, I would delete and just stick with, "We therefore respectfully request."
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? Right. Thank you. You're welcome, Nancy.
Well, I just wanted to know where she wants all this to go, aren't they voting on this on the eleventh or something?
Yep.
She'll give us a lot of time to get it where we need to get it, so where were you intending to send this?
The last paragraph.
Last paragraph, Governor Leach and Chafee.
To the Governor Chafee, Governor-elect Ruwondo.
Okay.
Leadership of the General Assembly, delegation from Tiverton.
You sent me this in Word?
Yes.
So I can just modify it.
The, the critical one is the last one, Mr. Kevin Flynn, who's chairman of the State Planning Council Consortium.
I guess, I guess I'd have to try to send it by email and regular mail because tomorrow's already the ninth, they're not gonna get it by the time I leave.
I'll try.
Thank you. David, Robert, Texas has a brief update on town, town website and council page.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Concerning the hour, I will try to be extremely brief, um, I've been in charge of the town's website for approximately a year, year and a half since we did the revision, uh, the government contractor that has designed these websites, Ronan Gov., um, they have come out with a brand-new template, uh, which we're gonna carry over to the, the town of Tiverton, so I just want to inform the town council that we are gonna be changing over the look of the site, but I'm also looking, just really quick, um, if, if you guys have any pros or cons of the current site, uh, either you can just shout them out tonight or just send me an email, uh, so we can roll whatever suggested changes that you may have into the new site, and also, I would like to extend to all the town councils, but especially the brand-new town councils, uh, we do have a town council page that does have, uh, room for a biopic and a brief little bio of your, uh, work history, your, the, the things that you kind of ran on and such, so, what I would like to do, if you're interested in doing new photographs, um, try to set up a date early, right after the holidays, maybe a Saturday morning or such, where we can all just be together, take individual pictures, and if you would like to have one group shot as well, we can do that, uh, but in the meantime, if there are any, uh, new houses that wanna update their bios or the old ones, uh, please feel free to send that information to me as well.
Mr. President, Dave, just a question, I, I think you've pretty much got a pretty good hand on, is it, all right, I'll give you, for example, four years I was on the Budget Committee and I've been saving all the paperwork, and I pretty much went through it all the other day and filled up my entire recycling bin with paperwork, and as you can see, each meeting, I mean, is there, is there a way that we can go paperless for the council, is there a way that we could go paperless?
Yeah, throw it away.
Through, say, the town website, and if each of us had, say, a laptop or whatever device we would need?
Sure, I mean, everything's technically possible, it's just an expense of it, um, several years ago when I actually worked for the county of Sarasota, everything's paperless, so it is possible.
What were they using, they just, each councilant just basically had a laptop?
They had a laptop at that point, yes.
So, and you can send, like, we could get confidential emails and things like that, and the whole agenda requests, and, that was something I thought we should look at because, I mean, just the amount of paperwork we generate for each meeting, I mean, I truly am a tree hugger, I wanna see it a little paperless someday, but it, that would be something I, uh, I'm hoping that we can maybe look at through the budget process this year, I mean, I gotta believe that, I mean, I've seen some of the leases on the copy machines and the, you know, the maintenance and things like that, and just the, the price of the paper and the ink and cartridges, I mean, if we could do a one-time, you know, purchase of some laptops that would still belong to the town but would be available to the council, you know, and then get away from having the clerks have to, you know, make copies for two days just to get our folders full, so, something I think we could be a goal for this council maybe is to move ahead into the, is it twenty-first century, right?
Maybe you start with the sound system.
Maybe the sound system first.
All right, um, David, your next up again, presentation on suggested changes to the elderly low-income exemption program and scheduling a public hearing on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
Right, um, since I've been here, I've been, this December is nine years, um, on and off, we've kind of formally taken a look at our exemptions to see how the town of Tiverton lines up with other communities, and about three years ago, that process was a little bit more formalized, uh, with myself, the town clerk, the treasurer, the collector, and Janice Goems, the senior senate director, taking a look at the exemptions, um, we've reviewed them, and for the most part, our exemptions still pretty much fall in line with the other communities, the only exemption that has really, uh, come up over and over again is the elderly low-income, because of the disparity between, uh, single household and multiple-person household, or person's household, um, the income limit is exactly the same, so, the perception is that the multiple-person household, um, i- is not really being able to take advantage of this credit program that we do have, so, the discussion has always been to increase the income level for those multiple homes, uh, person homes, so, this is what I presented to you in this memo, and basically, this is more or less a, uh, introduction to this because we do have to have that public hearing, so I don't know if you wanna go thoroughly through this memo, or if you have any questions, uh, prior to scheduling that public hearing. If we do enact the changes that I have suggested, um, currently we're looking at, uh, an effective on the tax rate of roughly one-point-seven cents, uh, expanding the income limits for those multiple-person households.
I have a couple of questions. The first is, what is the base, the statistical basis for the, um, adjustment, was this done, what was your methodology?
Uh, basically, I took a look at, um, where we have been as far as offering the, the credits, there really wasn't an analysis done compared to the other communities because the other communities do offer the tax breaks to, at different levels, um, they, they have several different programs, like, for instance, the city of Warwick has a, a circuit breaker program, where there are six to ten different levels of income adjustments, so there really wasn't a statistical, uh, study as far as a change, um, so we just came up with a number that is allowed by the current state statute, the current state statute allows up to thirty-thousand dollars, so that's why the adjustment was made up to thirty thousand.
And when you, you qualify a multi-person household as two, a two-earner household, so?
Correct, and in some cases, there actually might be three people, um, we, we have one, uh, household that has applied year after year, well, they try to apply, but they don't meet the income requirements because they have a, uh, disabled child at home as well, um, so, based on our current wording, we would include the income of that child as well.
Okay, um, okay. There's smoke coming out of my ears, um, a little bit because trying to, what I, this is good, I think, this is appropriate, but I, I'd like to understand how the basis of the exemptions are having in either reality, not mean, just meaning what exists currently in the demographic population of sixty-two or sixty-five and over households in Tiverton, and the benchmark, uh, what is the median income, what is the, the, um, federal government's guideline for low in, big L, big I, low-income households, and what they use, typically they don't use a one-for-one household count, it's a one-and-a-half per household count, so, it does have some benefit one way and some detriment the other way, um, I guess I just, I, what I would, while, this is, this is getting there, I think, that what I, just as a person who wants to know this stuff, I'd like to see what this looks like on a, on a kinda real basis, real numbers, as, you know, there are X amount of households in, in Tiverton that have incomes in this range, and what do, what do we expect, and is that reasonable?
Sure.
Is, is eighteen thousand dollars for a single reasonable, um, that's, let's see, you know, so that's like eleven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, uh, of income, which is just under the median for, uh, a single wage earner on social security, twelve-hundred-and-fifty is the median for a single wage earner, and then a part-time wage earner would be, uh, somewhere in the four-to-five-hundred-dollar range, so if you were that, um, person, would you qualify under that program, I guess is the question, so?
Right, and that's something I can present at the next town council, because we did take a look at that, um, but we were also trying to work within the parameters that's currently.
Yeah, I can imagine that's tricky.
On the records, and, um, so that was the challenge.
Yeah.
Because now if we start adjusting further, uh, the impact of the tax rate is gonna be greater, and we're, we're, we're sensitive to it issue as well, so, but I, I.
Yeah.
I understand where you're coming from, and I will, I will present that at the next meeting.
That's great, I just had, um, a flashback to about five years ago where I was, before I was a town council, we were talking about low-income qualification for, um, free trashbags under the then-proposed pay-as-you throw program, and my sentiment is the same, if we're gonna do this, we ought to do it right, and we ought to design it to help the people we want to help, and, and, um, not, and I'm not saying this is what you're doing, but not to look like we're helping people, but actually do so, so... So, you know, obviously, that's your intent as well, because otherwise, you wouldn't be doing it.
Sure. Based on what I can recall, when we did take a look at it, based on the households and median income, we looked at and estimated that another 20 eligible households would fall into this program. Adjusting the income limits, there was roughly 43 that were receiving the lowest possible assistance, moving up into the middle ground, so they would have a greater benefit. So we do have some of that documentation already, so at the public hearing, I'll present...
Because I enjoy doing this, I'm gonna look at it too, because we, Tiverton benefits from being a five-year trending ACS community, and they lasted that in 2013, so we have some pretty firm data on what actually hap, it's actually better data than, better data than the census, the statistical update.
Great, that's all I have.
So we'll have the public hearing on January 26, and you'll get that information to us?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm not gonna have a public hearing, I don't have anything to...
You wanna schedule a public hearing?
On the 22nd?
26, on the 20th of January.
Of January, as the agenda says, yeah. Town administrator requests for ratification of award of bid for Judson Street Community Center.
Madam President, according to your packet, you see that we went sealed bid auction on 346 Judson Street, known as a community center. We received three bids. The highest bid was $66,000. I am recommending award of the sale of the building to that highest bid, as a private party. Property will return to the tax rolls and pay property taxes going forward.
Madam President?
Yes.
As somebody who's been saying to sell that business, that building, for 10 years now, I would like to make the motion to sell, sell, sell.
To?
Henry Messerall, 11 Main Street.
So Joe, what is your, what is your motion?
Not just a sell.
The $66,000. Well, sell, 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 she can't wait.
Sell, sell, sell.
All those in favor?
I'll second it first.
It was seconded.
Oh, it was, I'm sorry.
Yeah. All those in favor? Opposed?
I know you just voted, but...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we know what the use is going to be? Because just because it's the highest bid, if they're gonna put X number of children in the school system, it may not be the best bid.
It's a single-family residential is all it can be, right?
Not necessarily.
Without special use permits.
I believe one of the bids was for veterans' housing there.
That was the first bid.
That was the first bid.
But it's only a single-family residential, correct?
Community residence is a zone buster, though. Just because you get $24,000 or $20,000 more upfront, if it's gonna cost you $25,000 more in education, may not have been the best deal. Thank you.
Thank you. It's fine. All right. Town administrator, ratification of amendment to Tax Assessor, Dave Roberts' contract.
Madam President, in your packet, you had an evaluation of Mr. Roberts' performance as tax assessor, and my recommendation is that he be, his contract be amended to include a 2% raise for this fiscal year as a reflection of his having met his goals, and in keeping with decisions that were made in the budget process last year for reward of that performance.
Entertained a motion?
I move that we ratify an amendment to the tax assessor, Dave Roberts' employment contract, to reflect, to reflect the salary increases and FICA increase and pension contribution increase for a net of $1,540.
Do I second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Suza, discussion of hiring special counsel to seek damages from solicitor type relative to Taika Tree Levicence.
I put this on the agenda for discussion, because I just feel as though I've had some unanswered questions.
Yeah.
I wasn't on the council at the time, but I've been able to, you know, obtain a lot of the information in the behind-the-scenes, make a determination. Now, I asked the question, whether or not the town...